Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Hope you all had a wonderful summer. I'm sure it was too short for us all. I now call to order this public hearing and, I'm sorry, I call to order this regular meeting, that was the previous one, regular meeting of the Scottsdale Unified School District Governing Board. The date is August 14th, 2018, and the time is 5:05. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Board Member Beckham, will you please lead us?
............................................. All right.
We will have a roll call from, starting from my far right.
Sandy Kravitz.
Allison Beckham.
Pam Kirby.
Kim Hartman.
Barbara Perleberg. All board members are present, and we do have a quorum. We start with our first agenda item, approval of agenda. I do have three items to pull from the consent agenda item, or consent agenda, item J, personnel action items, specifically Mary Grace Althoff resignation date. We'll be changing that in discussion. The second item is consent agenda item S, the IGA between SUSD and Page Unified School District. Also consent agenda item V, authorization for execution of agreements, contracts. Do I have any additional items that we'd like to pull from consent? Nope? Okay. Sorry, yeah, V. I said five, but I meant V. Did you have an additional one?
Yes, please. W.
W? And that is approval of Phase Two of upgrade and expansion of video security system? Great. Okay. So, item W. Okay. So, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? So, will... Thank you, Board Member Hartman. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Kirby. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. And we will start now with our agenda item four, and call upon Dr. Krieger to present student and staff recognition and celebrations.
We have...
Yeah.
President Perleberg, we have no student or staff recognitions at this time.
I guess it's pretty early in the year for that.
Other than, lots of kids showed up, well behaved, ready to go, teachers were ready, principals were ready. It was a great opening.
That's great news. All right. Terrific. Then we'll move on to agenda item, I'm sorry, five, and call upon Dr. Krieger to present superintendent's comments.
Thank you, President Perleberg. At this point, I just want to, excuse me, to highlight the board retreat that was held today, which was very timely in that we were able to reconfirm the organizational clarity for the district as we are moving forward. So, we, as a team, the cabinet and the board, reconfirmed that our core purpose remains to ensure all individual learners reach their full potential. And we wanted always to stress the "all" students. It's what makes us different from some of our competitors, as we take all kids that come in across our threshold, and we are always ready to teach them and help them reach their full potential. And the core values that we have that help us with that purpose: responsiveness, student-focused, humble, and growth-minded. We are an educational institution. Growth-minded is huge. It means we all learn, and we are all constantly learning. We are humble in that we are willing to learn. We don't believe that we know it all. We are student-focused. Without the students, we wouldn't have a district. It's all about the students' learning environment and what is best for that environment. And thirdly, it is responsiveness, that we must respond to you as community members, respond to our staff, and respond especially to the needs of our students. And what do we do? Our business definition is pretty simple: we educate. Enough said. And lastly, how will we succeed? What are the strategic anchors? They are accountability. We all must do our jobs as professionals. We expect the kids to be accountable, to do their work. And we are all held accountable by our professionalism and by our relationships with one another. We are, we have courage, courage to do the right thing, courage to try something new if the old way doesn't work, courage to reach out to people and include them in our collaborative efforts. And lastly, as we've said before, student focus. That is an anchor. That's what we're all about. So, with that, it was a full-day meeting, planning, defining objectives in draft form, and looking at how we're going to get to making that core purpose come alive and continually reinforcing the values and the strategic anchors. It was really a great day because of the open discussion on all of these points, because I was also pleased that our new cabinet members got to know the board and vice versa. That's important. And to see that we are all together in what we want for this district is truly important and significant. Thank you all for that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. We'll move on to our first information discussion item, agenda item six, preliminary bond program update. Dr. Krieger will be leading that conversation?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, President Perleberg. This is an important issue for us all, how we spend the bond money in the most appropriate way to what the voters voted for, as well as what is best for our students and our staff. And so, we are lucky to have been able to hire a consultant who has a long history in the Valley of working with many districts through their bond issues and helping them make the best decisions. His name is Dr. Skip Brown. And Dr. Brown is here today just to give us a little preliminary look at what we're going to be looking at this fall. Dr. Skip Brown.
......................................................... Thanks, Dr. Krieger. Madam President, members of the Governing Board, I am in fact Skip Brown. Actually, it says Walter B. Skip Brown. The "B" actually stands for bond, fortunately or unfortunately. That's a true statement.
(Laughter).
I'm delighted to be here tonight. This is my home district. The last time I was on this campus was 69 years ago, when I walked across the stage and got my diploma. So, anything I say wrong, I'm holding everybody personally responsible for my lack of education. My experience, I was a, once I finished college, I became an Army officer. I was in the Army 22 years, served both in Vietnam as well as in Europe, career. Finished my career as a Lieutenant Colonel Promotable, and way too young to sit at home, so what are you going to do? I said, "Well, I looked for the closest thing to combat I could find." So, I came into public education. I was delighted to be selected as the Director of Transportation of Paradise Valley Unified School District. And you know something? We don't appreciate those guys nearly enough. That is, in fact, an interesting job. Held that for about five years, and then I was kicked upstairs, became the Assistant Superintendent for Support Services and Planning, where I stayed there for the remainder of my career in Paradise Valley Schools. I retired back in 2007, so for about the last 16 years, I've had several part-time jobs. One of them is a Senior Project Manager for Valley Schools, and under that, we worked with membered school districts, helping them do all kinds of things, from building to buses to pretty much anything. I always called myself the Darth Vader of the school district. I didn't get around the kids too much. I'm on the other side, the buses and the food service and the transportation. I'm also sole proprietor of Brown Consulting, and I'm also adjunct faculty for Northern Arizona University. For my education, this is unusual. Usually, I don't put the first part of this up, but in fact, I am a proud product of the Scottsdale School District. I went to Lola Elementary. Does anybody even know where that is anymore? Then I went to Scottsdale High School on double sessions, before we opened that brand-new, state-of-the-art Coronado High School, Go Dons! University of Arizona for a Bachelor of Arts in History. Yep, Go Cats! I got a Master's from Webster State University. Go dictionaries! And my PhD is from Arizona State University in Public Administration.
Go Devils.
Go Devils. Yes, I'm sorry. We have a bifurcated house, and I really have to fight with myself sometimes. It's kind of sad. The scope of work that I put through, when I started talking with Dr. Krieger about coming in and seeing if I can help, or if I can add something to people, is take a look at existing data. What do we have now? What's going on? I want to take a look at, maybe stakeholders. That's always a good idea. Everybody bring something to the table. If we can sort through and get a shifting of that, I'd like to find out more about it. I'd like to monitor where we are right now, and examine current process for bond project management. How do we do it? And participate in meetings as required. My deliver will be a report. I'll try to get that done in early October or earlier, if the board says we'll work to get something that makes some sense, and the timeline will be done by the Fourth of October. The idea is to get through this, it's not rocket science. We can figure this out, and we can kind of get together and come up with something that makes some sense, I think, I hope. That's my goal. I looked at the pre-election material, which I thought was good. I'm sure you've all seen the bifold pamphlets. Those are the basic general projects that were brought together before the election. And then I took a look at the bond pamphlet, which becomes the legal binding document for us, and we have a voter-approved, you know, almost $230 million, $229 million. And we can do all kinds of things. This is a small print that most people don't read when they get their voter pamphlet. We can construct and renovate school buildings, purchase transportation vehicles, you can buy land, we can do all kinds of stuff. But that's not what we talked about. That wasn't the pre-election-type discussions. We can do it. The bond pamphlet gives us the ability to meld and make what's best for the kids and for the school district. So, it's a good document. The thing that's called out that most people do read when they look at the bond pamphlet, are they, what do we spend the money on? This is what it is right now, the capital improvements and the estimated costs, for a total of $229 million. There'll be some other costs in there in terms of bond sales and some of the things to support the bond, but this is generally the thing. So, my initial planning thoughts, after spending exactly a week, two weeks, whatever, not enough time yet, is first of all, the pre-election material and bond pamphlet provide an excellent compass for the district's project. We know where we're going. It's good promise, it looks solid, there's no obvious flaw in anything we've promised so far. We looked at building lifecycle costs, which is really important, not only to keep it good for the kids, but also, it's also an economic thing. You don't want to, you know, you can't, it's expensive if stuff breaks. We looked at the school learning environment was one, PE and athletics, we've already seen forward progress in some of that, safety, security updates, and that's always a hot topic. And you're short of making our schools look like Florence, which I think is not what we want to do. That's a real tough one. We've got to figure that one out. Transportation and rebuilding eight schools was brought in the pre. So, the district has developed a capital planning document that's a useful tool for communications financial management. I don't know, I think it's widely published, I think. It was given to me by Dennis Rayler, and it's this wonderful spreadsheet. And on the front of it is kind of a table of contents, and then it's backed up page by page, by school by school, by project by project, by money by money. And I just only wish I'd been smart enough to do something like that when I was doing this for a living. It's a good document. It's a good management document. It's different from what Mr. Gad will be doing with his financial management piece, but this is a good management in terms of process and how we take a look at these things. It's a good dashboard for the Governing Board to see where you are as well. Initial planning thoughts. Maintenance has been looked at, and it's done a good job. You've had the FMC group come through here and look at every one of your buildings, top to bottom of all your systems. You also had Mr. Rayler do the same thing. They know pretty much what needs to be done in the school district. That's unusual, actually, and it's really good, because that way you can start applying money to it. The maintenance piece of that big document, I just let it go. I think it's doing just fine. Keep informed, make sure we know what we're doing, but I think that one looks pretty good. Transportation, continuous plan. I know you've got a new transportation director. I haven't looked yet at the vehicle replacement plan. I will before I'm done, but I think that's probably on track as well. The real key is in the construction and renovation. We've got to refine the processes to enhance our transparency, our data availability, our communications, and our confidence, get this together, and find ways, the best way to do that. How do we do that that makes sense to everybody involved? I have three foundational values. I tend to apply everything I look at, and I think they're good ones. First is efficiency, and this is the one that makes Jeff Gad smile. Least cost, doing things right, biggest bang for the buck. That's the best way to do business. The second value is effectiveness, doing the right things, the best result. Sometimes those two values are in direct conflict with one another. Sometimes it's too expensive to do what's best for everybody. If you could have classrooms with only 12 children, you'd do it. Can't afford it. And then the third value is equity. We have to balance efficiency and effectiveness. We need to make sure that when a child walks through a door in any classroom in this district, they have the same opportunities, the same everything that anybody else has, whether you're north, south, east, or west. I think those are the three. We keep those three in mind, we won't get far off the track, I think. The board is the decision-maker. I didn't have to say that, but I did, because it felt good. It's true. No matter what, you approve every purchase order, you approve, everything comes through here. It's in your laps, and it's a big deal. So, you scored at one point, and I'm not sure if everybody here, I think everybody's at least present, back in December, I think, of 2016, where a rubric was developed to try and help us figure out what is the order of march to renovate and rebuild these schools. And you scored that rubric, and which would be rebuilt, based on the age of the building, enrollment, the size of the school, the health of the building, and that's a big thing. That's the FMC, they went through and did a good job of that, and the lifecycle costs. Those things then led you to come with a decision you made. Those are trackable, transparent, good deal. We can do that. The process worked. So, you reviewed the data, you made a decision in public. But other factors you might want to think about adding to your rubric in the future, some things might be good for you, things like enrollment trends, not just the size of the school right now, but what's it going to look like in five years? Is it going up, going down? And other things you might want to think about, like recruiting, retention, transportation, some of those things could make other elements of the rubric. And we'll discuss that perhaps in my report, or in a working session if you prefer, in the future. Oversight. The district provides the Bond and Capital Override Oversight Committee with updated information on school constructions, classroom improvements, and other major projects funded by approved override and bond. That's in your district website, which is almost verbatim. Then the idea of the committee is reviews to make sure that what we're doing is what we said we do. We stay within the line of the voter's pamphlet and legal and so on. And that's, I want to talk a little bit about sustainability, though. One of the things we look at is the School Facilities Board shows us percentage of your, what percentage of your capacity are using your schools. And that's really not a very good statistic. It doesn't talk to what we want to know. The district values and support neighborhood schools. Smaller schools, while not as efficient, Mr. Gad, may be more effective in terms of student achievement. It's a balance. Now, what about that third one? Equity. Size can affect the equity. If you get too small a school, we may not be able to provide the services to the children in those very small schools. There's simply won't be able to staff it. Or those schools become a very significant cost, where they're actually taking monies away from other schools. It's a balancing act. We need to talk about that. So, what are our courses of action? And ours, the Imperial ours really, what are your courses of action? One, how small is too small? When does a school become not viable? That's a tough question. I've got a couple ideas, but I think that's one for discussions. How should we deal with schools with a tiny enrollment? They're not too small yet, but they're heading that direction. What do we do about that? What kind of process do we need to put in place to make that make some sense? And do we anticipate overcrowding? When and where? We might well do that. And there's some other things in the safety and so on. So, next steps. I'm going to meet with the Bond Capital Override Oversight Committee on August 28th. And we're going to reaffirm that projects completed and underway are within the scope of the voter-approved bond cap. That's the charter of that particular group. We're going to present emerging data, and that we being, now that's Mr. Rayler promoting the emerging data, the data, so what's going on. We'll look at school construction, we'll look at classroom improvements, we'll look at other major projects that are going on. And then we'll have an open dialogue at that juncture, just to find out what people are thinking. It's quite a good resource. My next steps, one, I want to continue the analysis, taking a look at how we're doing business. Want to look at strategies for reducing design and construction cost. I've looked at the last couple. There may have been ways to get a better deal. I'm not talking 50% off or something like that, or a twofer, but some kind of a better deal than perhaps we've gotten before. There's some things we can do. We need to look at protocol for getting stakeholders' input, and that's not just in this room, but also in the communities, both the parents, as well as the people who live there, as well as buildings, churches, and things in the same area. How do we do that? What's the protocol? I want to look at our current processes, how we're doing business. I want to look at our projects, the scope of them, and validate project cost estimates, including inflation. I put that in there only because in some cases, you know, we're not building prototypical schools, or at least we haven't, I think. And I think that at that point, we might want to start looking at how do we form fit a school to match the needs of that community, to make sure we don't overbuild or underbuild. I'd like to put a notional calendar out for each proposed rebuild project from conception to final completion. That notional calendar would not include a start date. The notional calendar would consider what does it take to get this thing done? How many months, from month one to month last? Does that make sense? I think that the order of march and everything else is going to be strictly up to the people sitting on the other side of that dais. We'll review district staffing. And I will just tell you right now, Dennis Rayler's a great man. He really is. He was my Director of Facilities and Construction over in Paradise Valley, and he's just a terrific man. I think you all know that without even being cold. But unless you're going to kill that man, you better get him some help. He's doing, he's got a foot and two canoes. There's an old saying, "A man with a foot and two canoes is going to get wet." So, we need to make sure we get something to help Dennis out, and what makes best organizational, structural sense to, what does that look like? Got some ideas, and we'll make some recommendations. And I'll do all that by October 4th, or earlier if you like. What do you say? If you want it bad, that's the way you usually get it? No, I'm just kidding. Okay, that was my introduction, my initial foray into this. I got a chance to meet and be welcomed by members of the Bond Override, whatever, that committee. We had a chance to talk. I will, thank you for the welcome. You're very, very well received. Do you have any questions, guidance, or things that I've missaid or walked down the wrong path?
All righty. Thank you. Let's see, do we have any comments or questions at this point? Board Member Hartman.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, and appreciate you taking on this role for us. It's important, and you're entertaining, too, so it's kind of a little bonus here. Just a couple of questions for you. First regarding, and this may not be a question for you, it could be for a Dr. Krieger question, the enrollment trends. The last time I think we saw enrollment trend information was several years ago, it may have been like a 2014 report. What is the timing when we'll be getting an updated report, and how will we be going about that?
I think the initial, the thing about enrollment trends, there's actually two pieces. It's the historical data and the data going forward. I think in this district, unless there's a huge block of empty land where they're going to start building like they are at Eastmark and things like that, and in the extreme south and east valley, you can almost do this yourself, and it's very simple. You just get your, pick a day, 10th day, 40th day, 100th day, and get the enrollment numbers from those days per grade. And a really quick assessment for one year is just say, look and see, are my kindergarten numbers lower than my fifth-grade numbers? And that's, I mean, that's, we're talking about brain surgery with meat cleaver now. There, but you can look at that and maybe take it back five years. And I think that in this particular case, regression analysis is probably really quite appropriate for this district, unless there's some substantive change you're going to make in terms of grade levels or boundaries or something like that. A pretty straight regression would probably give you a pretty good idea what that looks like. Going forward, there's a group called Applied Economics.
Right.
I think you've used them before. Mr. Bremmer's crew, I call it the gold standard. He goes out and really does it from the ground up, and does a wonderful job of it. But I think in terms of the usefulness for this district, I think you could probably almost do it yourself, or someone doesn't want to give it to me, I'll do it myself, come up and look at the trends. That's going to tell you more about what you're doing in the next five years than probably a long 10-year guess from Mr. Bremmer. Does that answer your question?
Well, it does. I'm not sure I agree with that completely. I thought the Applied Economics information actually is useful, because we're building schools for, in our district, 20, 30, 40, 50 years, so really looking forward prospectively, I think, is important. And when we had the Applied Economics last time, it looked back, like you said, appropriately backwards and looking at current enrollment, which absolutely is predictive of the future. But it also showed very important prospective information by community.
By community.
So, for example, at that time and still present, South Scottsdale is growing at a much larger pace than North Scottsdale. In the PV area, it was called, their term, aging in place, so there was actually declining. But the economics are very, very different right now, and obviously, you can't project out forever, but I think that would be prudent upon us to actually invest in subject matter expertise on forecasts, because we are building schools.
If I made any kind of statement, I'm not a fan of Applied Economics. That'd be wrong, because I really am. Those guys are the gold standard for this kind of stuff in Arizona. For the near term, two years, I think whatever you come up with doing your little brain, you know, brain surgery with meat cleaver type of thing, would give you probably similar data that Rick Bremmer would come up with, only because it's two years. The shorter timeframe, you could probably do it yourself, and there's no reason you couldn't do both simultaneously.
Yeah. I'm guessing, though, that there's probably at least some high-level data. It doesn't need to be an empirical first study. We can use existing data. I really would be interested by community to understand what does demographics, so large number household information, number of households, families per household, what that looks like.
He can also...
I think that's really important, to see that by community.
He can also...
Otherwise, I do feel like we're making decisions with a meat cleaver, and that's really not what I want to be doing.
The one benefit that he certainly will give you is by community. He can also talk about enrollment trends. But back in the day, when, if you were in a tenants' area, you would go to that school district. Those days are gone now. And so, trying to predict where that open enrollment goes to, whether it's a charter school, or even to another school within the district, or another school in another district, it's a little black magic. And he does that not badly.
Yeah.
He can tell you exactly where they are. So, it's data by, making decisions with data, and that's a question, that's a commitment the district could make. It wouldn't be a bad decision, that's for sure.
So, to that point, that's another really important point, because there was a lot of data that referred to what was in boundary and out of boundary. So, not only from a build perspective, it also enables us to look at it from a marketing perspective, to understand where we're not penetrating and how to go after that. So, I think there's multiple benefits of actually getting that data that's pretty critical to the future of the district. So, is it possible to get that information, or how can we get the information, and by when? when?
I think you'd have to contract with Applied Economics to get it, and he could probably turn it pretty quickly, but I wouldn't want to speak for him.
Well, we-
That's pretty quick.
Yeah, actually, Mr. Gad has already worked with Applied Economics, and although, because they are so busy, because they are the gold standard, he couldn't do a full study for us until the spring, but he said that he could do a quick turnaround and a summary, and give us the information that he needed for these particular areas that we're looking for.
So, this summer? Or like, the past summer, or future summer?
No, he will have this by October 4th.
Okay, terrific. Okay, and that would be great to actually get that in advance of a discussion, so, because that's, it's pretty detailed information.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My second question was really around the rubric that you referenced to, that we actually created in December of, I think, 2016.
Sixteen, I believe so.
Circumstances have changed, the decisions we made then are different than maybe the decisions we'd make now, certain schools' enrollment has increased, certain decrease, which may change them on the list. So, will we be looking at a refreshed version of that on October 4th as well, or how are we gonna go about that?
I think that that would be exactly how we get to that point, it'll be interesting, because I think what goes into that rubric needs to be clear in everybody's mind on the board, because if you're gonna score it, you own it, you need to make sure you understand it. I can make some proposals and show you what kind of data it would go into, where'd you get the data from, how solid the data is, and you can make a decision. But I think, yeah, redoing the rubric, you know, decisions have been made, we're not gonna just keep blindly following down the aisle, let's say, plan is a verb, and so we wanna continue to plan, and that's exactly what that would be. Take a look at it, do it again, maybe add some things we didn't have before, and then see if it changes the data. And then, if we really want to get fancy, we could try to maybe run some sensitivity analysis, seeing if things were changed a little bit here and there, would that have changed the outcome of your recommendation?
Okay. So, in the spirit of that, October 4th, is that a board meeting, or is that a work study?
Study session.
That's a study session?
That's a study session.
Okay, great. Okay, so if we can definitely-
I'm sorry, September 4th?
Or you said October 4th.
October, sorry, okay. I know, I know.
Is a work study, okay.
Yes.
Great. So my request is that we also get this information prior to that day, so that we have some time to kind of absorb it, analyze it, reflect on it, and then come prepared for a discussion around it.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Board member Kirby.
Thank you. Referring back to the report that board member Hartman referred to in 2014 with Applied Economics, if I'm remembering correctly, their logo was also on a report in 2012. And while Applied, no one from Applied Economics actually presented those reports, they were presented, and I would encourage us all to look at the 2014 report, and see how accurate it was. And if it was off, I'd like to understand, before we just rubber stamp Applied Economics as the golden standard in the state, I'd like to understand why they believe it was off, and what they have changed in their analytics to address that.
In the artillery, we used to call it should-hit data and did-hit data, and you want to compare the delta, and find out why, because you can adjust your aim at that point, using that kind of a modification. I think that probably, and I will call my good buddy Rick Bremmer, and tell him that's part of what he needs to present on the 4th, he needs to figure it out, saying, okay, here's what we presented, here's what actually showed up, why?
Well, and I'm gonna stress this, because he actually didn't present it.
No, no, but-
But it was a report that had the Applied Economics-
I'm sure he'd stand behind the report, I'd be astounded if he didn't, he's a good guy that way, he's very smart, and I think that he could come by and address. We had an interesting situation in another school, just a very small one, and there was one of their schools that should have been in decline, he predicted it in decline, and they grew by like sixteen or eighteen kids. In a tiny district, that's a big deal. And so the superintendent and I were somewhat concerned, and so we called him, and it turned out, those sixteen kids came from two houses, that two families move in with like eight kids apiece, and how do you predict that? I mean, that's something, you know, your best demographics won't give you that data, but it's still a question you need to ask, you predicted this, this is what came in, why? And it's, you know, the old should-hit, did-hit type stuff, and it's, you've gotta find out why.
Okay, great, thank you.
I will actually give him a call, and alert him that when he shows up for the 4th, he better have that data.
Thank you.
He better bring his artillery.
He will, you know, I'll be sitting there, he'll be really anxious to make me happy, how about that?
Board member Beckham.
Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Brown, for the information. I'm gonna be on the other side. I sat in the community and saw these demographic studies, and how they came out, and I just would say, if I ever was on that board, I would never pay for one of these demographic studies, so I'm kind of on the other side of the fence. And here's the reason why, is because Scottsdale's a mature area, and typically, but I could be wrong here, typically, those demographic studies are based upon real estate, and growth of real estate, and they kind of predict how many families live in these homes, and that's where they get their data. And so I don't see it as valuable, as valuable, if it's in the short term, I agreed with your statement, was excited to hear, I thought it was a fresh, a breath of fresh air, that recognizing some of the disadvantages of these studies. However, if the scope of work is well-defined, and it is going to meet the outcomes that you're actually looking for, then I might have a different opinion. But I've heard two things tonight I want to have looked into. One is, is that the comprehensive study will not be done to the spring, and that this is a, I forgot the term that you used, but a lighter study. And that may be because it's only using, it's doing a short term. And if it is only gonna be doing the short term for the October 4th deadline, then that isn't gonna give you the information that you just requested. So I want to make sure that, since there's two different studies being talked about, that the, what you're expecting is going to meet and match that October 4th study, or is really, you're talking about that more comprehensive study that would come in the springtime?
I wouldn't put words in Mr. Bremmer's mouth, but I do know he's used by a lot of the districts in this area, so those kinds of demographics, he's probably already got the district's data pretty well put together, I'm guessing, and again, please don't hold him accountable for what I'm promising, but I think he probably could at least talk intelligently about it. And one of the things that he does do, that I do appreciate also, he looks at mature neighborhoods, and there's a life cycle of how kids come and go, you know, you watch the flip and flop shows or whatever on TV, and we're starting to see more of that, where people are actually turning these in. See, I'm part of the problem this district has, I moved into Laguna area, I had a child, she's graduated high school years and years ago, and we're still in there, and I will be in that house till they carry me out of it. Unfortunately, nobody with kids are gonna move in until I'm gone. That's problematic, but it's also measurable, and it's also, you can also model it, and I think he could probably give you some data that way. The benefit of Mr. Bremmer, in my mind, is more the longer ranges, where you take a look at that twenty to fifty-year, and again, this crystal ball is foggy as all of ours, but that's, I think, where his real benefit comes in. He looks at birth rates, he goes to census data, he does things that I didn't do, but the data is gonna come out one way or the other, and in the short term, probably the next six years, either one of you are right.
Well, and I'll bring up, what's also changed over the last, I'll say, six to ten years, is that it is no longer just based upon children being in homes in that district, it's really based upon choice.
Yes.
And I don't know how you predict that choice, and I think I mentioned that, that, you know, no one could have predicted the exodus that was happening at Scottsdale the last six years, unless you had talked to the individuals to have found out why they were leaving. And so I don't know how that's predicted, so I would be interested in knowing how he's going to predict that choice piece, that behavior piece, before that we just dived into a study.
That's, you're right, that's very difficult, because you don't know, because you may choose today, you may not choose tomorrow, and it makes it tough, it really does.
Board member Kravitz, did you have your light on, or you?
Well, I don't want to belabor the point about demographics, but I don't think you use that term, I think that's what we're talking about. Every time I heard of the term demographics study, I get nervous. But we're decisive reasons, and this is Kirby mentioning, because I've been out here, blowing up, maybe three, four superdeputies ago, where this is, where they started to break growth in Scottsdale, they were up by fifteen years, and we devoted a lot of resources to the areas that we shouldn't have been voted elsewhere, and we could have lingered on, but that's where we're at. So, I do hope that the gentleman from Applied Economics, when he comes here, is prepared to defend his data. I'm interested in hearing, as you described, defending, you know, where the hidden miss was, and why.
Yep, no, I think it's-
Because you know, reacting, and we can have opposite reaction, and the economy's been going like angustis, and sorry, they sound like they're getting down, but any day now, I'm just like, what's, when's it gonna drop? And are we going to be in the same boat we were fifteen years ago, and you feel like X is gonna happen, and Y? So, you know, I appreciate the form of work.
We need to push the plans out to ten or more years, if we can, but we understand that on a quite pragmatic basis, parents don't send their kids in classroom sets, they send everything they got, they're not waiting for a signing bonus, and so they come in, and you get what you get, and you're gonna get what, and you're gonna have what you had, that sounds stupid, but I think that notion of what's in there right now is probably what's gonna be in there next year. You can look at the delta from year to year, what's your promotion rate, do you gain more kids on promotion, or do you lose some kids? You can do that kind of stuff, that'll give you a near-term study that'll be pretty solid. If you want to know what's going out in five to more years, to your point, then you want to start looking at birth rates, and some of those mega trends that you won't see just by going from year to year in the school district. So, both approaches are okay, there's nothing wrong with either one of them, and maybe set together, it may give you a better chance to make a more solid decision.
Board member Kirby.
So thank you to my fellow board members for fleshing out why I brought up the 2014 study, and now that we're talking about long-term studies, five, six years out, short-term studies, I then would encourage everyone to go pull the 2012 Applied Economics study, and then look at how accurate they were, what they said was going to happen in 2013 and 2014, and look at the 2014 study, and what, I mean, it's even their two-year, and as listen to this, the piece that quite frankly may have been missing was this choice piece. It might have been the one variable, yes, they got households, yes, they got birth rates, they had all of these variables, and the one that was the elephant in the room that we probably didn't really know how to measure it even, back then, was choice. And so that's why I'm asking, have, ask them to reflect on how close was he, and then to share with us where the miss was, and then how the new forecast has captured that miss.
And I think that's the, you're right, that's this amorphous X, we've got to figure out how to get that, or at least get a better guess at it, start chunking away things that aren't. And we, plus we need to, I think we're aware now, we weren't, we, me particularly, wasn't aware of just exactly how strongly choice would affect what's going on. I got a taste of it when I was in Paradise Valley, they opened a Catholic school right next to one of our overcrowded elementary schools, Pope John the Thirty-Second, or whatever he is. Holy cow, that went from overcrowded to ghost town overnight, without any, nobody said, oh, by the way, we're leaving, they just didn't show up. And I was kind of rocked on my heels on that. Those kind of experiences, you don't want to replicate, and you can avoid it, I promise you.
Board member Hartman.
Thank you. I'm not gonna belabor that point anymore, I look forward to the information, and absolutely want to make sure it's thorough, and relevant, and all that kind of stuff. The one other item I wanted to put on your list, and it's already on your list, but really putting a fine point on it, is the inflation. Cost of construction is going up significantly, it's gonna continue to go up significantly, and so whatever data that we need to understand that the best we can, project that, and in addition to that, therefore, what's the recommendation? You know, if we think it's gonna look like this twelve months, twenty-four, thirty-six months, because it may, it may provide insight as to how it accelerated, we want to be on this process, and at the same time, it's really gonna be important data to be able to communicate to the community, this is the reason why we're doing this. And I'm guessing, any school district with a bond is considering this, so that availability of resources is going to be another complication in this, so helping us understand that, and being able to articulate that to the community, I think is important.
It's happening right now. I mean, it's relevant all over the valley, we see it a lot, and sometimes I've heard inflationary notes as high as twenty percent, which is scary. The ones we see, we see the should-hit data, when I go out and look at various guaranteed maximum prices for various projects around the valley, I think we're probably looking right now, just experiential, about five percent inflation, which is still a lot higher than we're used to, I mean, it's been down to like zero or one. Back in the olden days, in the nineteen seventies, I was fortunate to get a government-supported loan for my house at nine point nine percent, back in the seventies, when there was just a ton of inflation. Felt real lucky at nine point nine, nowadays you think you're out of your mind if you took a nine point nine percent. So it's there, it's real, but we haven't seen it in so long, people don't believe it. And so we're looking at experiential data, I've got data from Chandler Unified, Queen Creek Unified, we're looking at Awa Free and some of the others that are actually in construction right now, and see what their cost per square foot is. So there's two pieces to it I want to look at when I talk about how to save money, one is, what did they do to get lower square feet, cost per square foot than we did? And then secondly, how does that look for inflation? What is that gonna do to us? Because we gotta, we cannot budget for it, it doesn't matter, it's still gonna be there. I mean, it's one of those things where you, but it's there. So inflation is a big deal, and it could be a significant, I mean, a really big deal, so we'll have to see what that turns out to be. Or, the whole place could pancake like it did, you know, seven, eight, ten years ago, and we'd be back to, you know, very low inflation. I'm not sure what I'm rooting for, frankly, I'm sitting here just sort of keeping my eyes open.
Board member Beckham.
I also want to take the opportunity to thank you for this presentation. Couple of the things, and if you want to go back a couple of slides, I found that when you talked about next steps, when you talked about what direction you would take, I found that you had, I could actually follow your thought process, and I really, and I want to go back to one of our core values of growth-minded. I saw that growth-minded, you took some data, you had your history, your experience, and then you gave us some conclusions and the rationale behind it, and then you kept it always moving forward into what is the next step, what am I expecting, you had timelines, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you. It's, I'm trying to be logical and bring it together where, you know, everybody can say, this is, I see where you're coming from, I see where you've been, and in fact, maybe some, there certainly will be people who don't agree, that's fine, but at least we've got a track, it's in the open, everybody can say that's how we got to where we are, and that's really valuable, in my mind.
Okay, well, great, thank you very much. I want to just add, and maybe belabor a few points, that appreciate the work you're putting into this dialogue, you're kind of coming into a ten-year-old conversation, basically, so we're glad that you're here. I do expect that your research and discussions on inflation are gonna increase our timeline, put us in a bit of a crunch, I think we're ready to tackle that. I would agree with the board members that, I mean, we could talk demographics all day long, but until we put the lens on of choice and demand, and do we have products that our parents and families are gonna demand in certain places, that it's kind of a little bit of a waste if we don't do that as well, so I'll echo those sentiments. And I just look forward to continuing that process that we started, where the decision-making, and the logic, and the reasoning, and all the factors that are going into these choices are transparent, board discussions with administration, with the community, and that's how we're making the decision, as opposed to, kind of in the past, where you had a recommendation from a committee, and no one knows how they got there, so I very much appreciate this process, and I think we'll work hard to get there.
Thank you, I work hard to get committees, because when it goes south, I want someone in my corner when everybody comes shooting at you, it's always good to have as much friends as you can have, but thank you very much.
Okay, great. Board member Beckham, you have an additional comment?
I forgot one thing, and it's because you mentioned it two or three times, is that you'd said, is October 4th too late? And I just want to reiterate what board member Hartman said, it is too late if it's the first time that we see it. So we are expecting a report, and whether it's in draft form, prior to that, and to give us plenty of time to ask the questions, get answers, and then if you need to, you know, amend it, so that it's final on the 4th, not that we're seeing it on the 4th.
Well, title it emerging data, and I'll give you as final a look as I can, and a lot of this stuff, I think, is probably available pretty readily right now, so I think most of it can be pretty well done, John. Don't look at me like that, Dr. Krieger, it's not nice.
All right. No, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All righty, look forward to working with you. We'll move on to our next agenda, item seven, public comment. Sondra, do I have all the cards submitted? Excellent. In conformance with open meeting laws, the governing board may not discuss or take action tonight on any matters raised during public comments that are not on the agenda. However, the governing board may respond to direct criticism, ask staff to review the matter, or ask that it be placed on a future agenda. As a reminder, each speaker will have three minutes. Vice President Hartman and our digital timer will indicate the time with a thirty-second warning. Please be prepared to close your comments and relinquish the floor at the conclusion of your time. We do ask that each speaker induce themselves for clarity in the records. We thank you for your time and attendance here tonight, and your cooperation in following the meeting protocols. Our first comment is from Michael Norton.
President Perleberg, board members, Dr. Krieger, Sondra, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I appreciate the opportunity. I haven't been to a board meeting in quite some time, I haven't spoken in quite some time, there's been a reason. To say the least, I was a little bit disgruntled with what was going on, as were many other people. We've been through a period of incredible transition, a lot of chaos, a lot of conflict, and a lot of turnover. And I think that turnover has really defined this district for the last two and a half to three years. As I listened to Skip Brown talk about the construction of the Bond project tonight, I thought back to 2015, when we watched a presentation by Dave Peterson, an ADM architecture, and we knew that the enrollment information we were looking at was cooked. We were getting bad information, it was being given to us for a reason, it was being given to us to convince us to do the wrong thing. We then went through a period where Dr. Birdwell brought in Brian Robichaud, Louis Hartwell, Laura Smith, and we went through another period where we knew we were being lied to. We knew that there were bad decisions being made, and we had to start over yet again. I've been to four, I will have been to four Bond Oversight Committee meetings, when I I've been to four, I will have been to four Bond Oversight Committee meetings, when I attend the meeting in August, and this will be the fourth time we have had a new leader at the Bond Oversight Committee. It's incredibly difficult to progress when we're continuously turning over the critical management of our organization. We are running a competitive organization, we're at risk of losing more enrollment if we don't respond to the instability in our own system. We have a network of 30 service facilities where we put kids in school every day, and we have churned the staff. We look at all the people that have left, we look at all the new people who have come in, we look at the people who have been good and bad, and right now, today, we are in a real power curve mode. Since you brought Dr. Krieger on board, great people have joined our organization. We have good principals coming to work for us again. We have Skip Brown making one of the best presentations about construction I've ever heard in the five, six years that I've been attending board meetings and talking about construction. That was a more enlightening presentation than anything I've ever heard coming to these meetings. Last Thursday, you had on the agenda two items that caused a lot of anxiety. One item said we could hire Dr. Krieger and make him the interim superintendent. The other item said we could do something different and start looking for another person to lead the district. If you don't think that caused anxiety in the district, you really underestimate the amount of tension that exists. Thursday night, a petition was started, over 1,300 people have now signed it, asking for Dr. Krieger to be appointed as the interim superintendent and to have his contract extended into 2019. Open letter has been sent, please accept the public's comment, please extend, extend Dr. Krieger's contract.
Thank you. Mike Peabody.
Madam President, board members, Dr. Krieger, Sandra, my name is Mike Peabody, as I'm sure most of you already know. As a parent, I'd like to welcome our new families and welcome back all of our returning families to, to Scottsdale for the 2018-2019 season. For this school year, we must tackle so many different issues that affect all of our SUSD students. Some constant issues we face year in, year out, some brought on by the happenings of the past few years. An issue for this year, as Mr. Norton just said, is an extension of Dr. Krieger's contract. In his few months here, he has brought a sense of clarity and stability that the district sorely needed. So as a parent, I implore you, as many others are going to, to extend his contract for the, for this school year. As for item 3D from your special meeting, a search for an interim should not happen. We have an interim. He's a good man, we need to keep him. We could use the money from that search to improve our schools, by the way, Tonalea can use some new air conditioning, buy books, benefit staff, or anything else to help SUSD and its students. An issue that was brought up also at the end of last school year was consolidation. That word spread the community, through the community like wildfire. It had a very negative effect. We should not start off a school year with consolidation, or talk of consolidation looming overhead. We should instead leave that topic to the next board, when two new people will sit here behind this board. I look forward to going to the Bond meetings. I look forward to Skip Brown and his presentations, they are fantastic so far. I, I cannot wait to talk about the cost to run a school and the populations of the schools, and Tonalea a lot, what to do with that, buses and rebuilds and everything. Lastly, to end on a positive note, I volunteered at Tonalea K8 today for Picture Day. I met our future architects and lawyers, future doctors, future engineers, and I was reminded of what I do. I do it for a 6th grader at Tonalea, proud Tiger, proud Tiger family now, and an 11th grader here at Coronado. I do things for approximately 23,000 more kids, a lot I haven't met. I don't do things for recognition, I don't do things to better my position with the company or with the community. I am running for the board, not for future political career, but I am here for all of SUSD, the families, and the students. Thank you.
Nikki Torito. Nikki Torito.
Good evening, I'm Nikki Torito. Thank you for this time to speak. I am currently serving as the co-president of the Scottsdale Parent Council. We sent a letter to all of you earlier, and this is basically a restatement of that letter. After a tumultuous year, Scottsdale Parent Council is in the process of reorganization so that it can ensure the values held dearly by its founders, such as proactive inclusion, transparency, and accurate representation are brought for, brought forth well into the future of the organization. As such, a special committee has been appointed as trustees to manage reorganization of the Articles of Corporation, carry out the necessary filings to become designated as a 501(c)(3) corporation, and serve as interim executive board. As a community, we've experienced a great deal of uncertainty over the last couple of years. Dr. Krieger came out of retirement to help his former district through a challenging time. He has stated that his number one goal is restoring trust, and with his solid experience, leadership abilities, dedication, and collaboration, is doing just that. But his work is not done yet. As the interim SPC Executive Board, we urge the members of the governing board to retain Dr. Krieger as interim superintendent for the remainder of the 2018-2019 school year. We feel that it's imperative that Dr. Krieger be retained in order to maintain consistency in leadership, reestablish trust, and advance SUSD goals while a national search is simultaneously being conducted for a permanent superintendent. Thank you.
Good evening. It's really nice to see you here again, Dr. Krieger. We appreciate having you here. Good evening, Board, Sandra. I want to give a quick, I'm Dr. Susan Hughes, you guys probably already knew that, wanted to give a quick definition, communication, because I think that was brought up at the retreat earlier today. Definition, one of the definitions of communication is imparting or exchanging of information or news. Direct communication between two countries will produce greater understanding. Another definition is means of connection between people, or in particular. There has been granted by all people concerned a severe breakdown in communication and connection between the stakeholders and the board. Silencing the SEA, the Scottsdale Parent Council, and attempts to silence individuals like teachers with fake disciplinary actions, sending letters of cease and desist to constituents, did not improve connection or communication. To date, the board has not apologized for the damage inflicted on the teachers, parents, and community. The connection will be evocably broken until there is a heartfelt apology. Once there is a connection, then there can be a beginning for communication. As a John Maxwell speaker and communicator, first seek to understand, and then to be understood. Dr. Krieger has met with several of us as individuals in an effort to understand. He has also met with us as the interim board for Scottsdale Parent Council. I am speaking as an individual. He has helped stabilize a ship that was sinking. Teachers were resigning, parents were moving their kids. When he came onboard, that gave some stability, and people opted to stay. He deserves to have the label "acting" removed from his title and made interim. Lastly, do not approve the $432,268 and 49 cents to Hunt and Caraway. That's on consent agenda. Their contract was approved under fraudulent means for the personal benefit of the disgraced former superintendent. There should be a clawback and a lawsuit to recover some of the missed used funds, not a payout. So please retain Dr. Krieger, he's made a difference. Thank you.
John Michael Greenberg.
Good evening. This is always a fun experience. I put in a blue slip, but I actually think this has more to do with what was on the agenda today. And I wanted to discuss a little bit about what Dr. Brown was discussing and what you had mentioned. I don't know if you recall, but in April, THK Associates actually did present a school district enrollment analysis to this governing board. And they presented all the figures that you were asking for in demographics, looking at the high schools. Now, I don't know if that information is verifiable or if it's reliable, but it's interesting that that was something that was completely omitted in that prior discussion. Perhaps it's because you have forgotten that you paid for it, although it would seem to me that you have forgotten that you have paid for a lot of things. One thing that I do remember, though, in reviewing that specific discussion when it was presented to this board, is that you guys actually made it very clear that rebuilding schools was not enough to bring back enrollment to this district. That was in the notes. And I would agree that school choice is a problematic feature of today's environment that we have to deal with, but it's been a problematic feature of this environment for decades. What concerns me is that the vision here, to borrow words, is pretty flat and lacking. I don't know how you think looking at demographics of what exists today is really going to be beneficial in bringing people back to this school district, when we have such great ineptitude in many of our departments, and it is wonderful, in my opinion, that we have Dr. Krieger, that we have Mr. Gadd, that we have Dr. Brown, people who seem quite experienced in what they're doing, and I'm hopeful that they are able to deliver on that, and that is why I support them being here today. But without actually coming up with a plan that says, "Look, we don't need to focus on the charter schools, we don't need to focus specifically on the demographics, we need to focus on what makes us great." That's how we bring back enrollment to this district. We have excellent teachers, we have excellent students. We can do this, but the idea that we're just going to build new schools, that we are going to, you know, tell people that we're going to communicate better, simply isn't enough. This is a systemic problem throughout our entire district. We need to think about the innovative solutions, the reasons why people come into our schools, arts, performing arts, fine arts, computer programming, opportunity for every single student to find a place here in this district, vocational education, anything, you name it, because what we need to be selling to parents is that when you come here, you will have a spot for your child. Academic rigor to vocational education, they will be productive, hard members of, hardworking members of our society. Thank you.
We move on to agenda item 8, our consent agenda. We'll review what has been pulled. Item J, personnel action items, July 1, 18 through July 31, 18. Also, item S, approval of renewal intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between Scottsdale Unified School District and Page Unified School District. V, authorization for execution of agreements and/or contracts. W, approval of phase two of upgrading and expansion of video security systems. So those items are pulled, we'll discuss them separately. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended? Board Member Kirby?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Kravitz, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. All right, so we'll tackle the first personnel action item, this one's very quick, I believe, Ms. Marshall, I'm looking over there. Ms. Marshall, just confirm that what we are changing in this agenda item is just one item, Mary Grace Althoff resignation date should be October 1st, 2018, instead of August 1st.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So at this time, then, if there's no other questions, I make a motion that we approve consent agenda item 8J, personnel action items. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Hartman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Now we go to S, approval of renewal intergovernmental agreement between Scottsdale and Page. I have a note here that we've gone ahead and pulled this off because we were notified this week that Page no longer wants to use SUSD's online learning services, correct? So-
Madam President, that's correct. Page notified us just this week, so we don't need to have you approve that IGA.
All right. So we'll let that lie, and move on to V, authorization for execution of agreements and/or contracts. And is this, was this pulled, I think, Board Member Kirby pulled this item? No.
No, you called it at the beginning.
Who pulled? I did, but we had a board member request V, correct? Or no?
Madam President, I received some comments asking questions about the limitations on this authorization. So I'm happy to entertain questions or help facilitate a discussion about that.
Okay. Great. Is it, Board Member Beckham, you have questions? We got, okay.
I didn't realize it was going to be pulled, so thank you very much. But I, I had a question on, on these agreements, are they, any of them ever going to be over 100,000, and if they are, that they, obviously, then they develop a policy and come to the board for approval? Is that a true statement? Do any of these ever go over 100,000?
Board Member Beckham, it is possible that they could be over 100,000. We do not have a hard and fast rule that everything over 100,000 comes to the board. However, you could certainly make that limitation in this authorization to say that those individuals, the CFO, assistant superintendent, superintendent, are authorized to sign agreements that are under 100,000. Another option, you could put a limitation that, as you have discussed as a board, that everything have legal review before they're authorized to sign. So you, you all might want to discuss some of those options.
Okay, so then I'll ask, I thought it was a policy. Is it just a policy if it's within certain categories? Because this is a different category, that if it's not over 100,000, it doesn't come to the board for approval?
I believe it's a practice and not a policy. I will double check, but I believe that's a practice and not written in your board policy.
Okay, so, but since it's a practice, would they, would the individuals then adhere to the practice? Maybe I just misspoke and I said policy versus practice.
Yes, they would, but I would say that you should amend the item to specify that that's how you want it limited.
So I would like to maybe hear from, as I understand it, this is something that is routinely done every year, correct?
Yes.
And so are there instances where there are numerous contracts or agreements that are of large amounts, that that would be cumbersome to bring it to the board if it was 100,000? Does the threshold need to be higher than that? I'm just not familiar with what the dollar amount of these contracts and agreements are.
And I'm asking Mr. Gadd to answer that question.
Madam President, members of the board, the procurement code requires, as does board policy, that any procurement over 100,000 dollars be board-approved. So all of those transactions that exceed 100,000 dollars will be coming to the board for approval. That's simply what we have, the rules that we need to follow. The contract here typically, if it's over 100,000 dollars, would be administratively signed after the board has approved it, or signed by the board, if that's their preference, board president, at the time of approval. These contracts, I think that, that are reflected here are those that are under 100,000 dollars. Many of them are relatively routine, and, and that authorizes that individuals who are most familiar with that purchase transaction to, to sign those contracts. I think in the, I speak for my colleagues, that anything that appears to be involved legally, with the wording, et cetera, will go to Michelle before any of us are willing to sign even those below 100,000. But it does allow us, the way it's currently written, to approve those more routine kind of items that are pretty clear as to what the intention is.
So would it be cumbersome to add any amendments with dollar amounts of 100,000? Or does that- Or does that, does that become an obstacle in doing business for you? Because that's not, my goal is not to be setting up obstacles.
Certainly over $100,000 is not an issue, because, you know, the board and through the legal counsel has seen those, and they are in front of you publicly. The other ones, as I say, I think the way that we would like to operate with that is that anything that appears to need legal counsel approval is sought before any of these individuals mentioned here are approving any of those contracts. We want to protect ourselves also. And obviously, if we see something that we think could be an issue, that's going to go to district legal counsel.
Well, then, I would like to propose that we amend the proposal, and maybe we can put it in the actual motion, or we can put it under the background information, so it's very clear, the dollar amount and the legal review that is expected from the individuals, if that's possible.
Board Member Kirby?
Thank you. I would agree, and I appreciate the comments, but there could possibly be a distinction of how we should be doing business, as in your experience, versus how this district has historically done business. And not to this current administration, I don't believe I've requested this yet, but I have requested it before, a comprehensive review of policy DJE. Because there's also a component of board ratification, so, which is the board approving after the fact, that, in my opinion, has been taken advantage of in prior, very prior years. So I would like a comprehensive review of policy DJE. And, you know, we can amend this tonight to continue to do business, but that we just revisit this $100,000 in light of a comprehensive review, just to make sure it still makes sense. Because it may or may not. I don't have a preconceived, it may or it may not.
Well, and, I mean, I'm going to add the, or stress the concern, Board Member Beckham, that you have, is that I make sure we're not setting up staff for just a very complicated process, their daily operations, and then suddenly, because you could not get board approval soon enough for a contract that is very routine and very necessary and very, and just because of the timing of our meetings, you weren't able to, and that caused a problem. I mean, I guess that's my concern here tonight. If you say there's really no issue there, we know these are coming up long before, and there's, they're rarely ever rushed in any way, then I agree. I think setting, setting that cap for transparency is a good thing, but as long as that's assured, that we're not going to, you know, be hurting daily operations by any sort of delays. Would you dare to?
President Perleberg, that's why in cabinet, in our discussions, we stated, for our purposes at least, that the $100,000 limit, anything at $100,000 or more would go to Michelle, but not to burden her with all of those that are less than that, that are routine. It was that exact reason that we made that decision. Recommendation.
Okay. All right. Board Member, it's just all went off. Board Member Beckham?
Okay. I would like if there's, is there any more, should I ask, is there any more discussion? I'll make a motion.
All right.
So I make a motion to, and I don't have the exact wording right in front of me, let's see here, approve the authorization of execution of agreements and contracts within amendment. And I will defer to legal counsel, whether it goes in the actual motion or into the background information on the proposal, so it clarifies that any contracts or agreements over $100,000 will go to board approval in accordance with, should I say, policy or practice? Procurement Code, as well as legal review in accordance with procurement code. Would that be correct?
Legal review is not...
Okay. Just legal review, period.
All right. Do I have a second? What's that?
Second.
All right. All in favor? Oh, sorry. Board Member Kirby?
We just abstained.
Thanks a lot.[897.86][897.86](LAUGHTER). So, approve the authorization for execution of agreements and contracts as, and I am going by through the agenda and not exactly what is on that proposal, although I might have it. Do you have it?
I can, I can read it in full if you'd like.
Oh, okay. Okay. It is recommended that the governing board approve the Chief Financial Officer, well, thank you, because you're right, I did not read it correctly, to execute agreements and/or contracts in addition to the Superintendent and/or Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, and Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education for the 2018-2019 fiscal year whenever appropriate. This authorization for agreements and contracts will be in accordance with procurement policy code, and regarding legal review and, I mean, we're over 100, if, over, of agreements over $100,000.
All right. Board Member Kravitz, still seconds?
I still second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. All right. And then our last one, Consent Item W, Approval of Phase 2 of Upgrade and Expansion of Video Security System. Board Member Beckham?
Is Debbie Spalding here? Or somebody from? Oh, great. Thank you. I believe I sent you a question, so that you're familiar with it.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it yet.
You didn't see it? Okay. What I pulled it for, because I was trying to get an answer, I noticed that going, we, this is for Phase 2.
Yes.
And some of the numbers on Phase 2, I went back to Phase 1, so that I could compare them, since they were kind of together in the, in the tables. And I just noticed a discrepancy that I was trying to get a clarification on.
I actually know what discrepancy you're referring to, is on the first agenda item. The number was too high. And so if you look at the fund, the costs section?
Mm-hmm. On the tables?
At the top. That is the 100% accurate numbers. But the first time I did ask for too much money, but we didn't, we only spent what was in the line at the top.
Okay. So, just so that the public knows, I went back to Phase 1, and there were, there was a table giving the cost of what we were approving. We approved approximately $414,000 worth of equipment. Yet then, when it came to Phase 2, it showed that actually the number was 323,154 and some change. Thank you for that clarification. I would then like to have, well, I guess I'm going to have to ask the question, when we, because I have never encountered this, when we approve a number, and now we have discovered that it is an incorrect amount of what was approved, what is the process or procedure so that we correct it? Because that's what I would like to do.
My take would be that we, since we spent less money, that there's probably not a correction. Jeff, can you answer that for us? In my agenda item last May or June, we had asked for more money than we spent. But the number on here was correct.
Okay. So maybe what we can do here, so that we have public record of it and notice of this, is that when we approve today, maybe we'll put in the background information, that what was approved in Phase 1, because I believe you talk about in the background what was approved, and we will say that there was a correction, and that the correction, and maybe we'll even put in where we, where that error was, so that it'll be documented, and we'll have the correct amount of the 323,000, so therefore, the tables that are shown will agree with the narrative.
Okay. So...
I, I'm going to jump in here a little, because this, this actual posting and this, this item can't change. I mean, now that we have, what, you can note, you're not, we're not going to go back. What we can do is, in the minutes, reflect that, that it was noted that we spent less money at this time. But we can't, we're not able to go, and please, Ms. Marshall, correct me if I'm wrong, but we can't go back and change the board posting of this meeting, the agenda.
Well, we can, because we just did it on the one, on the one we just approved. So we can do an amendment and just add the information.
But that will be reflected in the minutes of our discussion. That we're not going backwards and reposting. I, I may be hearing you wrong.
Oh, I see what you're saying. You're saying it's not going to show up on this, it's just going to show up in the minutes, just like, well, that's fine.
Correct. Okay. All right.
So the Phase 1 was actually 323,154, instead of the amount that was on the agenda item last.
And I just want that to be reflected in what the correct information is.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't know how to correct it either.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anything else?
Any other questions?
All right. So then, at this time, do we have a motion to approve the Phase 2 of Upgrade and Expansion of the Video Security Project?
So moved with the amendment to be in the minutes, once Debbie gives us this. Well, she's said the numbers, so she'll give them to Sandra.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Kirby. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. All right. Well, that gets us to the exciting part of our meeting. Action Item 9, our first item is possible, 9A, Possible Approval of Contract for Dr. John Kriekard. I guess we'll open up. Any questions or comments? Ms. Marshall, did you have any information? Or no? We'll just have a disc, I don't think you do, but, okay. So at this time, do you have any comments? Or do we have a motion? I'm happy to. I'm happy. I'm happy to make the motion, very pleased to make the motion, that we extend the acting superintendent contract with Dr. Kriekard, and approve tonight, authorizing legal counsel to pursue the direction given in executive session regarding the contract, and that we extend his acting contract until June 30, 2019, or until a permanent superintendent is hired. Did I, I'm hoping I reflected the conversation properly there. All right? So I've made that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Kravitz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.[1361.51][1361.51](APPLAUSE). Dr. Kriekard, would you like to make some comments?
Thank you, President Perleberg, members of the board. I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to continue with what I believe is significant action to, to move Scottsdale forward. I would also like to thank the community and staff for your support during these weeks. I know that that comes with expectations, and I will work together with you and with the board to meet those expectations. Once again, this is about the students, this is about teaching and learning, and we will continue to be student-focused as we move forward with respect and professionalism. Thank you very much.[1419.23][1419.23](APPLAUSE).
And I'll just add that I am very thrilled that we're going to continue moving forward in today's discussions with the whole board, and your cabinet has just, I think, really infused a lot of hope for all of us. So thank you very much. All right. So we move on to our next action item, 9B, Possible Approval of an Interim Superintendent and/or Superintendent Search Firm. And I believe we have information regarding those search firms being presented or discussed in the recommendation, I believe?
Mr. Gad?
Correct.
As members of the board, I believe you received some information in the last couple of days, I guess it was yesterday as a matter of fact, that comes from the business office relative to trying to give you as much analysis as we can of the, of the firms that responded to the, the search RFP 18035R, which dealt with selection of a permanent superintendent. In that packet, we provided a scoring system for the three of us who did the scoring. And all three of us were basically in concurrence in terms of who we felt would be the best firm to perform the function. Those, that firm, there's firms, really two of them, one is very close to the other one. So I think either one of those firms could, could do the job. They are, they obviously have, as you, as you can see in the attached packet, they have quite a history of superintendent searches within the state. And that's, that's opposed to the other two that did not have that extensive history. So we feel very comfortable in the board's discussion and selection of either two of the higher-rated firms, basically Hazard &amp; Young and McPherson &amp; Jacobson. We believe that both of those firms can be responsive to the district in whatever way the board wants them to be.
All right. Well, open up to questions or comments, board members? No one? Board Member Kirby?
Just a question for Ms. Marshall. Tonight's action is to, if you could just walk us through after tonight's action to approve the vendor, are we approving the proposal as submitted? Or does that, approving a vendor allow us to provide feedback on their proposal as submitted, and possibly not wholesale change it, but just tweaks, et cetera?
Board Member Kirby, yes, you can approve, you can choose a vendor tonight, and if you have follow-up questions or clarification on the scope of work, we can do that legwork and negotiate that with the vendor.
Okay. So as, as an example, just so the community has a, has, kind of knows what I'm talking about, I believe one of the firms provided a Google search, Google, the Google search on the candidates, another firm didn't mention that, but if that were something we were interested in, we could go to the firm that didn't mention it and ask that they include that, and then we could have that conversation, of course, at what cost, et cetera.
Yes, we can do that.
Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Board Member Beckham?
As a, as a follow-up to that question, is at what point in time would we be doing that? So tonight, would we choose a firm? And then it is, how are we going to go about relaying what we are interested in as far as scope of work, or any changes that are in the proposed, proposal that they gave us?
You can select a firm, and you can discuss tonight as a board. Individual members can request that I follow up with the vendor on questions. We can do it either way. And then I can bring it back to you as a board at your next available meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So it sounds like we want to pick a firm first? Or do we have, I guess, discussion on?
We need to have discussion on the timing. If we, if, if, so you're going to be, Ms. Marshall, you're going to be running point on this, correct? Yes. So I'm just trying to, in my head process, if we send you our feedback on the proposal, and then it's not until our next meeting, which is August, when is that?
September 1.
September...
No, our, August 30 is a study session.
I just want to, I want to, is August 30, that's two weeks. I mean, that's probably not going to set us too far behind, but it also gives us enough time to provide meaningful feedback and for you to have those conversations. So if we said as a board that we should get our feedback to you within the next seven days, then that gives you seven days to have that conversation with the vendor, and then at the August 30 meeting, we can hopefully firm it all up?
That's reasonable.
Does that sound good?
Ms. Marshall, I'd also mentioned that we would, at this point in time, obviously we can do it afterwards, but also bring up any points that we have tonight.
We can. Yeah. Sure.
Board Member Hartman?
Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to thank Mr. Gad and the selection committee in reviewing the documentation. It was very helpful, and you summarized it really well. I just wanted to identify a couple of the, can I mention the firm that, that kind of stood out to me, or no?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So I just want to share this, because this, these are the things... So I just want to share this, because these are the things that stood out to me, and I think they'd be relevant from the community as well. So first of all, the criteria that you used, which I think, I feel comfortable with that criteria, was one, experience and qualifications, two, scope of services, and three, cost of services. So those were the three criteria that three independent people used in reviewing the data. As a result of that, the firm that stood out to me was your number-one choice as well, which was McPherson &amp; Jacobson. And in spirit of transparency, I just wanted to share, just with those that are here tonight and the community at large, some of the things that really stood out as why they seem like a good choice for us. First, McPherson &amp; Jacobson stays current with trends in education leadership by being an active participant and presenter in many national and state education conferences. I think that's really important, because we are in search of continued innovation and proactive leadership on the latest trends in public education and academic achievement. So that was helpful. Number two, this particular firm has over 900 potential applicants currently registered with them. So there is a long success record. There's a number of years here and the decades of experience, but they do have a large national database, one of the largest, to actually pursue candidates from, which was also a positive. And then, in addition to that claim, they provided more data that said, within the past five years, this firm has conducted over 200 superintendent and school administrative searches, of which are large urban multi-unified school districts, of which over 150 of these placements are still in position, which is quite a batting average, actually, based on our experience. And in those situations where searches, or placement was not permanent, they actually provided additional services for free for the replacement of that candidate. And then, and there's many others, but the last point I wanted to point out is their process. It's a five-phase process, which includes establishing criteria, which is a board practice. Phase 2, stakeholder input, which is a proactive outreach to the community to get additional input into the criteria, which is, community is all stakeholders, internal and external. Three, evaluation of the references and applications, which is critical to do as much background research as possible. Four, selections to be interviewed, so it's a downsizing of candidates, that there's a selection process and a committee that's put together to review those. And then, Phase 5, which is actually establishing performance objectives based on the criteria that was identified in the selection process. So, the five-step process seems very thorough, thoughtful, and inclusive. So those were some of the criteria that I used to feel comfortable with this particular firm.
All right. Board Member Beckham.
I also, when I was reading through it, was very impressed with McPherson &amp; Jacobson. So I was, also, it's nice to have that additional recommendation that came from the three individuals in the finance department. So, I just, I won't, you know, go on to say all the details, but some of the ones that you had noted, I had also noted. There are a couple of things that I would, we would like, I personally would like to add, so I'll add those later on, because I don't know if McPherson &amp; Jacobson is going to be, I'll say, I don't want to say the winner, be approved. But I think that they probably gave the most comprehensive of proposals, and I appreciated that with the outline and clarity.
Board Member Kirby.
Ad弥to to what they said, and additionally, I picked up the phone and called one of the references that they provided, another board member, and got very positive feedback. So.
That's terrific. Board Member Kravitz.
I liked McPherson &amp; Jacobson the best also. I, as you said, I thought they had the most comprehensive proposal. I believe, in my notes, I wrote they had an online survey for the community that, which really struck a chord with me, and they also helped to establish performance objectives. I don't know if that was said, but, so I would agree with that assessment regarding McPherson &amp; Jacobson as well.
All right. Any additional questions or comments at this time? If not, so this agenda item, we do have, it allows us for an and/or an or. So I'll ask, do I have a motion to approve an interim superintendent search? No motion? Excellent. And, hearing no motion, do I have a motion to approve a permanent superintendent search?
So moved.
You'll have to specifically name the firm.
Oh, oh, sorry. Okay. I recommend that the governing board, let's see, how are we going to say that?
You make a motion.
I make a motion that we move to, let's see, enter into discussion, is that how we're going to say it, Michelle? Enter into discussion regarding scope of work with McPherson &amp; Jacobson for a permanent superintendent.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Beckham. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. All right. So that moves us on to 9C, action item, Arizona School Boards Association, proposed 2019 political agenda, recommended by the Legislative Committee. What's that? Board Member Beckham.
I was wondering if we were going to provide Ms. Marshall with any of, any recommendations we had when negotiating the scope of work? Or do we do that afterwards?
I thought we had that on the 30th, once.
Oh, we're going to do it on the 30th. Oh, I thought we were giving some of them tonight, and then, yeah. Right. And me having a public conversation about that on the 30th is what I have marked. Okay?
All right. So, 9C, ASBA. Board Member Hartman and Beckham, I know you're legislative liaisons for ASBA. Did you have any particular comments initially regarding this?
So, I have not seen the political agenda. I apologize.
Oh, Board Member Kirby, absolutely.
That was actually sort of my point, in that normally, when we take action, we discuss and work-study. We try to have at least one work-studied conversation before we take action in a formal board meeting, and we haven't had the opportunity to do that. And I did see it. It was extremely lengthy, very wordy, and I think we need to approach it with some thoughtfulness. And the way to do that is to have it on a work-study first.
Okay. We'll look at deadlines and make sure, I, yeah, do you know Dr. Krieger about, we can do it on the 30th and still meet our deadline? Is that correct? Okay. Okay. So we will table this. I'm sorry, Board Member Beckham.
When I saw this, I did go ahead and call ASBA to do the clarification, because there is a little bit of a change. And the change is, is that what they are asking this year is that the board approve the four, the four agenda items. So what they've done is taken the supplement, they, instead of having it as lengthy as it looked, the 10 pages, they consolidated it into four items in which the board would approve. And then there is the lengthy five pages, which is supplemental. Each one of those will be discussed at the assembly, but we don't vote as a whole for each one of those. So what could happen is, we can vote for the four higher-level-looking topics that they have, and then if anybody has any comments that they want to make on the supplemental, they could give, we can discuss them, or we could give them to the delegate, and that delegate can bring them up in the meeting at the assembly. So it is a little different format this year, if that made sense. And it's not going to make sense until you read through the entire packet.
All right. So, so we will table this agenda item until our study session on August 30. And that'll be enough time. Board Member Hartman. And send us the information in advance, whomever is appropriate.
Well, it's in board book.
Okay. That'd be great.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
The entire thing is in board book, so. All right. Then that moves us on to action item 9D, selection of delegate and alternate to the Arizona School Board Association Delegate Assembly, September 9, 2017. Do we have any? Board Member Hartman, Beckham, would you, interesting, continuing, or is there someone else who would like to throw their name in? Board Member Hartman? Or is that from before? Sorry.
I am checking my calendar.
Okay.
I have attended, and do not mind at all being a delegate. I'm just looking at what the date is. I think Board Member Beckham, it's September 8.
I think it said 9. Said 9.
9. Okay.
Oh, sorry, it doesn't say 8. What did I see? What did I see, the 9?
Okay, Saturday, the 8.
Never mind. It's September 8, sorry.
Okay. I am out of town, so unable to attend.
Okay. Board Member Beckham.
I knew Board Member Hartman was out of town, because I asked her, because I was hoping she would be there. I did, I was the alternate, alternate last year. I did watch it. So I, if you'd like me to be the delegate, I can be. I do suggest whoever the alternate is, is that they do attend, because you do learn a lot about the procedure and what happens.
All right. All right. So do we have a delic, I'm sorry, an alternate nominee? Someone would like to step up?
Would you just clarify, is this is just for their political agenda for the year, this meeting?
Correct.
Oh, okay, then I'll be the alternate.
September 8.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. So at this time, I will make a motion that we approve Board Member Beckham as our delegate to the Arizona School Board Association Delegate Assembly, and our alternate shall be Board Member Kravitz. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Hartman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you both. Okay. So that gets us to our future items. Agenda item 10. So I do have, obviously, the negotiation for scope of work with the search firm, for the superintendent search firm on August 30. Do I have additional future item, agenda items request from board members? Board Member Kirby.
So as mentioned earlier, policy DJE, and I will follow up with Dr. Krieger with more specificity on what I'm looking at there. And secondly, I would like to have a work-study to discuss the selection and approval process of our curriculum and our supplemental materials.
All right. And Board Member Hartman.
This may have already been discussed, but just want to reiterate that it's on our agenda within the next couple of months, which is, Ms. Marshall, you'll have to help me with the policy reference on this, but it's the policy related to superintendent evaluation and process.
Yes, I believe that's policy CBI.
Okay. So it would be the discussion and the review, finally, the approval of updated CBI policy. And then, secondly, once again, Ms. Marshall, you might be able to give me the right terminology for this, but I suspect what I'm looking for is, we did some really terrific work today on vision, mission, values, and, you know, strategic priorities. And I would think what we might want is a resolution, once that's final. We did the groundwork today with the cabinet and with the board members. We agreed to the cabinet, along with Dr. Krieger, fine-tuning it, dotting the i's, crossing the t's, and proposing something back to us in September. And to memorialize that work, I'd like to suggest that we provide a resolution once that document is ready.
That's appropriate. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Board Member Beckham.
I would also like to support that we do in a study session a curriculum and supplemental review. I would also like, even though it was mentioned today in the retreat, to look at communications review and look at communications, resources, and staffing to, with the goal of improving our internal and external communications.
All right. And Board Member Kravitz.
Some of my requests are repetitive, but I'd like to get some dates for when I can expect we'll have these discussions. A discussion and review of stipends for all extracurriculars. A discussion on the bus schedule and school start times for the 2019, 20 school year. And maybe if we could do that in October, November, before December, for sure. And also, I'd like a discussion and review of class fees that we charge for students and how our fees compare with other districts. I'm concerned that some of these fees may dissuade some students from taking some of the classes that we offer.
All righty. Okay. All right. No other items, then? Move to our dates of upcoming meetings. Our next study session is Thursday, August 30, 2018, at 3:00 p.m. at Mojave District Annex. Our next regular governing board meeting is here, Tuesday, September 4, 2018, at 5:00 p.m. And that moves us on to our governing board reports. Do we have it? Board Member Hartman.
Thank you. First, just wanted to really acknowledge our educators and our support staff, and welcome you all back. Thank you for helping us get off to a great, a great year, along with our administrators. Look forward to it. And over the summer, there were still some really exciting things that were happening behind the scenes. Just wanted to share that with you, too. Programs that many of us actually are committed to are the Coronado Success Initiative and BUS. From the CSI perspective, there's new leadership at Coronado, so just want to thank you for really stepping up to support those activities. And then, secondly, on BUS, I just wanted to share with you, which is, once again, is Business United for Scottsdale Schools, we launched a couple of new internship programs this summer, and there's been some really tremendous success. We've had, just to give you an example of one nationwide, which hired eight of our students for paid internships, two turned into full-time employment. Those were seniors, which come with $5,000 per year college reimbursement and tuition. So we're already seeing success, and some of our students benefit from that. Another program that will be being launched, we're kind of excited about with BUS, is called, at one time, we called it Dinner with the Scholars, but this time, we're calling it Pizza with the Professionals. And what's really kind of fun about it is the Scottsdale Rotary has stepped up to actually meet with any SUSD high school student. We're establishing the frequency, but the first one is in September at Blaze Pizza, which is in partnership with us, for a structured but learning opportunity for our students to interface with professionals that the other not, otherwise would not have been. So to those individuals, professionals out there in the community that would like to participate, you're more than welcome to do so. And to our students, really, it's an opportunity for us to communicate what that program looks like and what the benefits are. And hopefully, there'll be long-lasting, not only learning opportunities, but professional relationships that are a result of this. So we'll share more information as it's launched, but it's beginning in September as well, with some great community partners. Thanks.
Terrific. Thank you. Board Member Kravitz.
I just want to give a shout-out to the Curriculum Department, to Dr. Nance and Cheryl Redner for, and your team, because I leave somebody out, sorry, for the two days of professional development at Chaparral. I thought the organization that you brought in, just from my perspective, just did a great job, and I believe there was a lot of positive feedback from that. I also want to thank them for the two days of new teacher orientation at Coronado that I attended, which I also thought was very well organized. And thirdly, a thank you for bringing in Ron Clark, who I thought did a great job, and really excited in a positive way, our teachers for this year. So thank you very much for all the work that you put into those events. All right. Thank you to the teachers that attended all of those events as well. Thanks. who I thought did a great job and really excited, in a positive way, our teachers for this year. So thank you very much for all the work that you put into those events.
Thank you to the teachers that attended all of those events as well, thanks.
All right, no further comments. I do celebrate and congratulate all our staff on a great start this year. It's terrific to hear. Do I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Can I?
Oh, yes.
I want to add one, I want to, is he still here? I want to thank the facilities team for the opening of, not only our two new schools, but all of the schools and in a fairly incredible monsoon season that happened at the same time. So I want to thank them.
Yes. Could not agree more. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Board Member Kirby. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Kravitz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Good night, all.